Welcome to the July 22, 2019 Select Board Meeting. We'll start off with one of the pre-established traditions that I think is a good idea by briefly[17.86][17.86]introducing ourselves, starting to my right.
John Hurd.
Joe Kuro.
Diane Mahun.
I'm Dan Dunn.
Steve DeCoursey.
Adam Chapdeline, Town Manager.
Doug Heim, Town Council.
Marie Karpalka, Board Administrator.
Thank you. We'll get right to the agenda. First, we have a presentation, Report on Demolitions and Replacement Homes. Mr. Chapdeline?
Jenny is actually going to take the lead on this.
Thank you. I'm Jenny Rade. I'm the Director of Planning and Community Development for the town, and I shared with you the report on demolitions and replacement homes, which is a report that my department conducted, beginning pretty much in October of 2018 through this past month. And I just wanted to kind of share with you the top-level overview and the recommendations that came out of that report, which then relate to another agenda item regarding a new working group that will help to work with us on design review guidelines. So with that, DPCD, the Department of Planning and Community Development, we studied the impact of residential construction projects, both large additions and also replacement homes on Arlington's low-density residential districts. That's R0, R1, and R2. And we looked at essentially what was going on in terms of demolitions or tear downs, as well as the new homes that were built, sometimes a single-family, sometimes two-family homes, and then also substantial renovations, which are basically anything over the sort of large addition that occurs throughout the town. But we specifically focused on R0 through R2 because that really was the charge that came from Town Meeting. Town Meeting's charge asked us to really look at what is going on with the demolition delay bylaw, which is basically in the Town Bylaws, enabling the Historical Commission to enact a delay on historic homes of a certain age, to study their significance and encourage a delay in order for maybe something else to happen, like, for example, a home could be moved, a home could be better preserved, and there could be an opportunity to work with a potential builder or owner on an improved outcome to preserve Arlington's history, if it's actually historical. And so through Town Meeting, we wanted to study and understand what would be the right year, or what would be the right time period, to understand if a demo delay was actually necessary, and then also any of the related impacts that come from the type of residential construction and replacement homes that I'm talking about, which means the impact on things such as the neighborhoods themselves, housing affordability, historic preservation efforts writ large, neighborhood demographics that have changed, neighborhood character, and then the impact of construction activity on a butters, and any associated sort of environmental impacts. There were sort of a long list of things that we were asked to explore. And so that's, the very long report outlines, you know, categorically what we found in those different areas. And we used a lot of different data and information that was available to us at the time of the study that I mentioned, including working with Inspeccional Services, the Assessors Department, GIS, the Census Bureau, APA, the American Planning Association. We also conducted interviews with staff from the Engineering Department, and for that it was mostly to understand their stormwater bylaw, and then the process around looking at any related conservation issues or other impacts. We also had discussions and interviews with area planners and people who are familiar with the historic preservation process in their communities. We really wanted to kind of vet what is the right solution for Arlington when addressing this particular issue, as requested by Town Meeting and also by the Select Board. So we started with evaluating the effectiveness of the current demolition delay bylaw, which is in the Towns Bylaw Title VI, Article VI. It's the Historically or Architecturally Significant Buildings section of the Town Bylaw. And we wanted to determine if it really, truly needed to be amended, and why. So several findings occurred. I'm not going to go through every one of them because that would take a while here. But the main thing that we found is that this type of development, the replacement homes and the large renovations, are really occurring at fairly low rates. There was a period where it did spike, 2014 and 2015 specifically, but generally speaking, it's about, on average, 27 homes per year experienced some, one of these conditions, either a full replacement, or they have a substantial renovation. And I think that what can be truly said about this, and I think we talked about this perhaps at 2017 Annual Town Meeting, is that people experience this type of renovation and construction differently, depending upon where you are in town. If you're in an R0 or R1, it might look a certain way versus an R2 zoning district. And that's because the densities are different, depending upon where you are. So I think that that would mean that any strategies to actually address that issue would have to look different, depending upon which of these zoning districts we're talking about. There's also the condition of the fact that some of the R2 zoning districts actually have single-family homes that are then replaced by a two-family home. So you're adding something. But in reality, because the development that's occurring in Arlington is actually quite low, the net increase in housing in Arlington is very modest, if not almost, you know, the net new is not significant enough to say that a large amount of the housing inventory is being overturned. And in fact, over this entire study period, which almost spans a decade, it's approximately 1% of Arlington's housing inventory that has experienced some sort of renovation or replacement. So we also wanted to be sensitive to the fact that people were concerned about housing affordability, and that there seemed to be a nexus that was imagined or created between what's going on with people replacing homes or creating large additions, and the impact on area affordability. And that, we spent quite a bit of time on, and we also utilized a couple of additional reports that had already occurred for the metro Boston region, which included Arlington, to look at the issue of essentially middle-income housing. It's people who are earning incomes that are over a threshold that would qualify as technically affordable housing, so they're earning more than 120% of the area median income. It's, or 100%, rather. So it's $103,000 or more per household, which actually captures quite a large number of households in Arlington. And what we found is that that's, the expansion of a demo delay bylaw would not actually address that particular issue. That's not the way to address housing affordability in Arlington. And of course, the next couple of agenda items, we'll get to talking about housing in Arlington, and what are some ways to go about doing that. But there isn't exactly a, the idea of, well, you know, newly constructed homes are, on average, more expensive than the smaller homes, you know, we need to increase the demand, we need to be responsive to, rather, the increased demand for housing. And so that means production is still really critical and key at various price points. And the replacement of housing is potentially part of that process. The other point that I made earlier about the, talking with the Engineering Department and looking at the conservation issues around this type of housing, is that the impacts of residential construction on the natural environment, we explored that. And what we recognized the most is that there are already either policies in place, or enforcement strategies in place, that we're either looking at enforcing, or rather enhancing, or changing over the course of the next year. So we're already working with other town departments and commissions, and including the Conservation Commission, on strengthening those bylaws, particularly Arlington's stormwater bylaw. And I'm sure you'll hear, you've heard a little bit about that perhaps at a prior meeting, and you'll hear about it again at future meetings. Because over the course of the year, the town will need to comply with something called the MS4 permit process, and so we will be continuing to revisit that issue. But again, that's not directly related to the residential construction and replacement homes and substantial renovations that are occurring. So the last thing is really just demo delay. That was really the big ask. What do we do about the demo delay bylaw? During the process of, we updated the inventory that I referenced by adding 130 new properties to that inventory, very recently. That was Phase 1 of a project that was funded by the Community Preservation Act Fund, as well as through the Massachusetts Historical Commission. Phase 2 of that project was a survey master plan, where we looked at potentially inventoring a number of new properties in Arlington, as well as potentially adding to existing or creating new historic districts. We recommend that there's sort of a two-part process here. The first part is really understanding and clarifying the Historical Commission's process to add units, add properties to that historic property inventory. It's quite, it requires a lot more specificity, and that, those details are not codified in our Towns Bylaw. And I think that that actually raises a lot of concerns for a process moving forward, particularly as it relates to then determining what the demo delay bylaw, the year should be, et cetera. So that's part 1. Part 2 is, any additional areas or structures that we want to add to that local inventory should be discussed by the Historical Commission. I mentioned that the Residential Study Group was heavily involved in this process. They actually helped to develop the scope of work, they helped to develop all of the work that took place for this report. We also added in, very early on, the Chairs of the Historical Commission, the Historic Districts Commission, and also the Historical Society, to make sure that we were having a very robust process and conversation about what to do about this particular issue. That said, the Historical Commission knows that this is one of those next steps to take, and they will likely take it up at a future meeting of theirs, but has not been addressed just yet. So that, that part 1 is really, I think, very critical. But part 2 is, the aesthetics of new housing seems to be the crux of the issue, and what something looks like. And that came about quite a bit because, as you know, or may recall, from the 2017 Annual Town Meeting, we developed the Neighborhood Construction Control, the residential, sort of the Good Neighbor Agreement is what everybody calls it, so that's easier to remember. The Good Neighbor Agreement is really the thing that came about as a result of a survey process of, you know, very key areas that we surveyed throughout town. And what we did was recognize and pick up on the fact that people are very concerned about construction impacts. And so that was what we tried to address through the Good Neighbor Process. The part that we couldn't address through that process was the aesthetics issue. So that comes to the second point and the last recommendation, which is the development of design review guidelines. At 2019 Annual Town Meeting, funds were appropriated in order to develop those residential design guidelines, and we would like to continue to do that. We want to actually form a design review working group who would help us to develop that scope of work, put it out to an RFP, hire a consultant, and also help us to vet and understand the right entity and process that would then oversee and enact any sort of design review that would occur in the town. And this would be for R0 through R2, just sticking in that kind of category. So I don't have anything further to add. That was basically the summary of the entire report, and some of the key findings. I'm glad to answer any questions. Kelly Linehama, also from my office, Senior Planner, is here. She had a great big hand in writing this report, as well as with Erin Swarko, Assistant Director. So definitely want to thank both of them for that, and feel free to ask me any questions. Thank you.
Mr. Kuro?
Thank you. Well, first, I'd like to move receipt.
Move by Mr. Kuro, seconded by Mr. Hurd.
Thank you very much for the report. I really enjoyed reading this. Obviously, a lot of thought, a lot of effort went into it. I have a few observations and a few questions. Firstly, I'm glad that, you know, you and the study group did take up this whole question that was put forward about trying to get at some of the motivations for why some of these might occur, and looking at the tenure of prior owners. And I think that was the proper measure, to look at prior owners. I think that you demonstrated here what I think a lot of us intuitively know, is that for a lot of people, this is their retirement nest egg. When we look at the demolitions by homeowners, I assume when you say demolitions by homeowners, that is the prior owner.
That's the prior owner.
And we have to clarify with folks that probably it's someone cashing out, and then someone else is doing the demolition afterwards. And it looks like, from the chart that's associated there, that actually the volume of those homeowner demolitions and renovations is quite a bit higher than straight developer demolitions and renovations, if I'm reading it correctly. So I want to thank you for highlighting that, because I think it's something intuitively we knew, and was certainly a concern when we discussed the warrant article that came forward a couple of years ago. One observation, and I know this came from the Assessors Department, not from your area, it strikes me when I look at the building grades by zoning district, I would expect them to revolve around a C, but that is such a tight curve right now. They're, that was very interesting to me, that we didn't have more out on either end. And I know you addressed some of that in the narrative. Is that, do you have any idea, is that typical for a community like us, that it would be such a tight concentration around that center point?
That would definitely be typical, and similar to other communities experiencing the same, you know, condition.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. I appreciate you taking a look at how, the effectiveness of the Good Neighbor Agreement through the survey. I would just note, and I think you do note in the report, that the number of respondents was, you know, very low. It's a very new bylaw. So I hope that we'll circle back around and re-measure that as we go forward, as well as the effectiveness of the tree preservation bylaw, as we get more data and more of a track record there. And lastly, design review guidelines, I got the recommendation to pursue developing them, and I know the Town Meeting did make that appropriation. Did I read in the report, I think, that there is, there's some differing thoughts about how those might be implemented, though, that either as a requirement of a particular project, or potentially as an incentive, participation in design guideline process, being an incentive for, you know, other allowances?
There are different models, so we would want to study and explore those different models as they relate to Arlington. I'm not sure what the recommendation will be exactly, but yeah, we want to look at a lot of different options.
But there are carrot and stick approaches.
Yeah, there's carrot and stick, there's advisory, there's required, and there's a lot of different ways to approach it. And we'll look at those things. And then which entity will actually oversee that process?
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
No more questions. Thank you.
Mr. Hurd?
You mentioned that the group, one of them added, I think it was 120 houses to the historic list?
130, yep.
130. What were the guidelines that were used, or what are the guidelines that are currently being used to add houses to that list?
Well, I might actually ask Kelly to help with this question, just answer it, rather. She actually worked with the Historical and Cultural Resources. She's working through on that particular conversation.
My understanding is that the Historical and Cultural Resources Working Group and the Arlington Historical Commission looked at preserving the fabric of a neighborhood, so it wasn't necessarily a home-by-home addition to the list, but it was saying, okay, there's a number of streets in Arlington where there's a specific character that has some sort of historic quality about it. And so those homes were added to the inventory, in part because of their contributing status toward that overall character. Does that answer the question?
Yeah. Yeah, I just, this is one issue that I've talked to a lot of people, where they've been, people buy a house, and they're very shocked to know that their Cape is on, is a historically significant building, and they have to go through that process for even a renovation that they're doing to their own house. And so, you know, I think going forward, it's good, as we develop these guidelines, to make sure that, that the, in order to get added to this list, there's some sort of historical significance to the building. And, I mean, whether it's, if you can come up with a historic significance to a neighborhood, I mean, that's fine, but, you know, I think, at some point, so I'm told, before my time, they just went around and were kind of, at random, adding buildings to this list, with really no set criteria to do so. So it would be good to have something a little more concrete, that ties more to the building and has a historical significance, rather than, you know, because there are buildings that, you know, no one likes to see the knockdowns, but there are some buildings that are just inefficient for, you know, current standards. And, you know, I just did this with my house. We had a small Cape that we turned into a house that was more useful for our family. And, you know, I would have been very shocked if that house turned up on a historically significant list, but I've heard situations where people have gone through that. So, you know, from my perspective, I think, you know, as we develop these guidelines, it should have a little more concrete historical significance for this list.
I'll just add to what Kelly said, and also to the points that you've raised, that of the 1,200 properties that are listed on the current inventory, you know, they're historically significant either because of the builder, the type of construction, the architectural features, the history of the, you know, sort of the contribution of that structure to potentially an area or a street, and, you know, a streetscape. There's actually a lot of other things that are added to that inventory, which would include like the old burial ground, you know, parks, other things like that. So I mean, it's not just the, you know, a single-family home here or there, it's many different types of buildings, Town Hall, et cetera. So the next door, Central School, you know, there are many buildings that are part of that inventory, and for the reasons that I noted. And there is also criteria that the state requires in order to add buildings to the inventory. That's actually the, what was raised during the survey master plan process, was the Mass Historical Commission recommending that we codify our process locally. So that came, that was a directive from them.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry. Mr. Dunn?
Thank you for the report. It was very interesting, and I think that it'll also be really helpful for Town Meeting, so I think it'll feedback there well. What's the plan for distributing it back to Town Meeting?
I think that we could do that through either just the typical Town Meeting member list, or we could find another method for distribution, either closer to the next Town Meeting, or in advance some, open to either of those things.
Yeah.
Or just simply have a Town Notice that lets people know that the report has been completed.
So I think Town Notice would be good, because I do think that it'll be good reading for other people, too, but I think sooner than later, to the, to actual Town Meeting list will be, like, that'll, I think that'll, it'll be well-received there, I think, if we do it that way.
I'll work with Adam on following up on that in the appropriate way.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Jenny, for the report. A follow-up on the pursuing residential design guidelines, and in terms of, will you take that to a next step? And how does that, how would that play out in terms of, you know, there may be things that people can do as of right now? Do design guides get codified in the zoning bylaw, or is it something that is just suggestive? Or where would you see it going from here?
They would not be codified in the zoning bylaw. They would be design standards. We actually already have design standards for commercial and industrial properties, so this would be a similar kind of standalone document that would be used by some body. In that case, those guidelines, or those standards, rather, are utilized by the Redevelopment Board. So this could be also by the Redevelopment Board, it could be the Zoning Board of Appeals, it could be other entities that have any review process for new development. And I don't necessarily, they would definitely not be in the zoning bylaw, but they could be part of other, another sort of ordinance or process. So we would have to explore that. That's all part of that exploration of what is the right thing for Arlington? What would it look like, and who would execute it?
Okay. And just that, as far as like the scope of a particular project that may not be subject to design review, I mean, the fear that I think some people have is, it would be over-inclusive in terms of more, whether it's a smaller alteration, smaller addition, that all of a sudden, everything has to be subject to review. I think that would concern a lot of people, so it's a challenge finding that balance, I imagine.
I think it'll be a challenge finding that balance, and to be prescriptive, but not overly prescriptive, to maybe have typologies and prototypes, but not necessarily prescribing specific materials or standards. It's not like the Historic District Commission's guidelines, they have their own design guidelines, which are, which do have more, you know, finite details in them, and there's very little alternatives. I think this would be much more flexible than that, but provide people with examples of the type of designs that we think are appropriate for Arlington.
Thank you.
Okay. You're welcome.
And I'm not sure, this question may be better addressed in the next presentation, because this is the way I read it specifically to Article VI demolition. And the questions that I have around, and I'm not familiar with the MS4 process, has to do with, I don't know if it applies to MS4 process, Good Neighbor Agreement, or something in the future agenda, the two- and three-family, which are getting converted to condos. Is that something, I don't see it in here, so that's really not contained in this. This had a very finite mission to do that.
Just didn't look at that particular issue.
So I think that's, and obviously, that wouldn't be addressed with the MS4 permit process you talked about.
Not specifically.
Again, unique. And the Good Neighbor Agreement, does it just apply again to this process here?
It applies, it's in the Town Bylaw. So it applies to any new, it's actually any new demolition, any new large addition, replacement home, there are a number of triggers that actually require a builder and Inspeccional Services to issue that construction control agreement.
Okay. I think I'll save it from when we get to the second part of it. And thank you so much. Mr. Hurd?
I don't know if you want to expand on that. You're talking about approval for condo conversions? An approval process for condo conversions?
I'm talking about if, in the approval process, whether something can be required, and if not required, can be, information can be made available.
Okay. Because the only way to do that is, because you don't need a building permit to convert a property to condos. Somerville has a condo review board, and they're the only place that I'm aware of that has a condo review board. And so that would be the only way to address condo conversions.
And I think--
The process is not well-received amongst people in the business.
And I think when we get to the next presentation, as well. I'm just trying to see if there's a way we can create an avenue in the process, and I was reaching here to try to get it in there. Did anyone have anything on this agenda item that they'd like to speak to? If not, on a motion by Mr. Kuro, move receipt, seconded by Mr. Hurd, all those--
We've got some.
Okay, sure. Just name and address for the record, please. Sorry.
My name's Lynette Coltherhouse, 24 Drakeo Ave. And I really appreciate this, that you're doing this. I came here tonight because this has been one of my burning issues, so I don't want this to come across as a wine session, you know, whining session, but I live in a little Cape house in a Cape area, and it's so disturbing to me when these nice little Cape houses get ripped down, and then an ugly, oversized mansion gets built. And there are several things that really affect me about this. One is, I think about the carbon footprint, and I think that we're not taking this nearly seriously enough. These large houses, not only is the destruction of an old house and the construction of a new house, is a huge carbon footprint, but also the amount of fossil fuels that would be used to keep a large mansion going is much more than it would be for a Cape. So in order to even justify building a house of that size, I think we need to have green standards, that, so that the replacement house is not using any more energy than the present house. But I also come at it from the perspective of, I spent half my life growing up in England, and people go over there to admire the historical houses, and Cape houses represent a piece of history, a piece of architectural heritage. They're not built anymore. They're 80 to 100 years old, and maybe don't fall into the historical category yet, but still, it hurts to see these, this piece of our historical heritage get taken down. And it's always, it always is, it adds to a sense of our own history and our own heritage to have a continuity or a sense of history of architecture. And I know that anyone who's been to Europe and walks around an older city, there's a charm to it. And if we start filling the town with mansions, we're going to take away that charm. And another thing is, the argument that I've heard a lot of is that, well, I am going to sell to the highest bidder, and that it seems like that money is always the bottom line. And I think that we're not thinking about what are the things we really value in town as a community, and I think there needs to be a discussion in the town about what we value, and not just around housing, but around diversity, around a whole bunch of issues. What are our values as a town? You know, it can't always be dictated by the profit margin or the money. And the other thing that I wanted to say is that sometimes it feels like there's a double standard, that the developers get permission to do anything they want. But I have a friend in town who lives in a Cape house, who applied for permission to build a carport in her driveway, and it was denied. And that just seems so wrong to me. Right next door to her, her neighbor was given permission to make this huge expansion that went almost to her, the border of her property. And so I think that I would really like to know that there's a little more transparency around how permit-- around how permits are given out and a little more fairness.
Thank you. Anyone else? Once, twice, three times? Okay. Just name and address for the record. We know who.
Yes, I signed up for public comment, but I can comment on this report.
Sure.
Is that right?
You, you want, okay.
Yeah, okay. I'm Joanne Preston. I live at forty-two Mystic Lake Drive. I'm a Town Meeting member of Precinct Nine. I'm glad to see that there's some attention to this problem of teardowns in Arlington. I ran for Town Meeting, and my neighbors voted for me to try, attempt some solutions to this problem. In our small neighborhood, we have seven teardowns in as many years. Six of the large, single-family homes were in excellent condition and important architectural and historical features, both inside and out. We lost many, many mature trees, and the roads have yet to be repaired. I attended all but two residential study group meetings over the last year and a half. I didn't see heavy involvement in the report that I was able to get on Friday, but there was some discussion. The report became available to the public only on Friday noon, and I had very little time to really study it and to give a full set of comments. So I hope you will give us more chances to talk about it. Overall, it's good to have a report, but it could benefit from wider consultation. And I'd like to just give a few examples. One of them is the effect of teardowns on the environment. Regarding trees, quote, "The assessment of impact of demolition and consultation activity to the tree population is unavailable." That's page twelve. In fact, the Tree Committee had come before the Select Board in January two thousand eighteen on the decline of Arlington's tree canopy and found home construction to be one of the major reasons. Currently, members of the Tree Committee are gathering data on the impact of construction on trees, which should be completed in the next several weeks. And I must say, at the last Tree Committee meeting, it was reported at one construction site, over thirty trees, mature trees are being cut down. They didn't interfere with the construction of the house, but the contractor said it's in the plan. We have to cut them down. So it's a big problem. The effect of teardown on neighborhoods, I think overall, it might be a small percentage of all houses in Arlington. But the problem is it's targeted to certain neighborhoods. In the neighborhood I live in, the Webb Cowat neighborhood, is a zone two-family with a large number of single-family homes. Tearing down single-family homes and putting in a two-family townhouse is much more profitable. In other R two areas, most of the houses are two-family. So they have a smaller percentage than we do. Okay. A bunch of teardowns. Talk about the survey. The effect of teardown on neighborhoods. I looked at the survey data. I actually have a background in survey research. I taught it at Harvard and Brandeis, and I do some of it myself. So I was quite interested. The greater problem was that only fourteen percent of those who were sent surveys replied. This, with only fourteen percent, you can't have valid data, even though there were all these nice charts and everything. You just can't. Because the question is, what were the other eighty-six percent of the people experiencing? We do not know. What, there was no attempt to follow up with these eighty-six percent, which is part of the course of doing survey research, is you go back and try to get a higher number. So I think those three or four pages, we have to not consider at this point until there's some way to really survey and get a reasonable response. Even thirty percent is better, but fourteen percent just doesn't count. And if you send this out, I'm sure it's gonna go to some people who know survey research, and they're gonna be very upset. So I think that needs to be corrected. Now, the site visit. In August, it was recommended at the residential study group that the site visit included our two neighborhoods, where the teardown of single-family homes was greater impact. And one was the Webb Cowat neighborhood. I could hardly wait. But in October, when I showed up for the site visit, I found out that it had been transferred to an R zero and R one zoning district, which according to the report on page eighteen, the majority of homes on the tour were properties where a smaller Cape, I'm sorry about your Cape, or ranch-style homes were replaced with homes with, quote, "current lifestyle choices." These specially selected homes were the least problematic of all teardowns. And, all right, I have just.
All right, only because we have, we're on Agenda Item One, and we have seventeen to go.
Much more to go.
And you're going on to seven minutes.
Seven?
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry, five minutes and twenty-seven seconds. I thought that was a six. You're going on to six minutes.
Much more research and study has to be done before such a report can inform any Town Meeting recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And this is sort of a starting point. There will be, whether it's at Town Meeting or other venues where this will be discussed. Is that correct? Or where does this go from here? After, we're voting to move to receipt. What's the next step?
I think we'll distribute as Mr. Dunn had suggested, but absent further guidance from the Board or further guidance in the future from Town Meeting, I don't believe we plan on revising or doing any further updates to the study.
Okay. Motion to receive by Mr. Carroll, seconded by Mr. Hurd. Any further comments or questions? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, unanimous vote. We next have a presentation on housing in Arlington. Mr. Chaplin?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Board. I apparently am the only person who can get a cold in two back-to-back days of a hundred-degree heat, so please bear with me as I try to go through this. Probably is the beard's fault. I'll blame it on the beard.
Sorry.
No, I'm more giggling about the kids.
So as the Board may recall, under new business several meetings ago, in terms of regrouping from Town Meeting and the efforts undertaken by the ARB, I talked to the Board about discussions I'd had with Jenny as the Director of Planning and Community Development and the leadership of the Redevelopment Board, in terms of where do we go from Town Meeting? And what we suggested was coming, coming back to the Select Board, looping the Board into these discussions about housing in Arlington, then having myself and Jenny go before the Redevelopment Board and have similar discussions, then hosting a joint meeting between the Select Board and the ARB sometime in the fall. And through all those efforts, move forward into what, what we want to do going forward. So this is really the start to that. I want to walk through this presentation, go over some data, talk a little bit about why we think housing is an important issue in Arlington and why we should be dealing with it. So I'll, if we can go to the first slide. So to do that, I'll talk a little bit about the housing crisis in the region, look at some data involving that. Then we'll talk a little bit about what that means for Arlington in particular. We'll move from there, talk about what some potential solutions might be, things that we can consider going forward and continue to talk about. And then we'll talk about next steps, where we see this discussion going over the course of the next several months, likely in lead-up to Town Meeting next year. Go to the next slide. So to talk a little bit about where we've been, this is a pretty straightforward slide. So in the Metro Mayor's Coalition region, that's fifteen communities in the Greater Boston region, from two thousand ten to two thousand seventeen, you can see pretty tremendous job growth in the region, a hundred and forty-eight thousand new jobs, equalling a hundred and ten thousand new people in the region, but only thirty-two thousand five hundred housing units being permitted. So I feel like, I tried a lot of different data points to, to demonstrate why there is a housing crunch. And I feel like this was a pretty easy, compelling way to see that we have a lot of people moving to the region because of economic prosperity, but we haven't kept pace in the number of housing units available for the people moving to the region. So what does that mean? As we've all seen, home prices have surged. So this is Massachusetts overall, it's not just Greater Boston. But as you can see from that blue line at the top, Massachusetts housing prices or home prices are the highest in the nation. And they're currently back on a surge after a dip from the recession. So what does that mean for people living in the region? Well, what we see is there are many households who are cost burdened or extremely cost burdened. If you look to the, the left side, that's folks who are living in a home they own. If you look to the right side, those are people who are renting. And as you go down, it starts at the top with higher income levels and moves down to lower income levels. And you can see in yellow, the amount of, the percentage of homes are, excuse me, people who are living in either their, their home or renting that are cost burdened. And the colors in green are those who are severely cost burdened. So burdened is more than thirty percent of your income spent on housing. Severely burdened is more than fifty percent of your income spent on housing. So without, I guess stating the obvious, that has significant quality-of-life impacts on people who are cost burdened, trying to live, work, potentially raise a family in this region. If we go to the next slide, that's a little bit about where we've, we've been. Where do we think we're going? So based on an analysis of expected retirements, baby boomers staying in the region, expected job growth or projected job growth between two thousand fifteen and two thousand thirty, and a projection about what a healthy vacancy rate needs to be to keep a healthy real estate market or rental market, the projection is that between two thousand fifteen and two thousand thirty, we'll need another, excuse me, a hundred and eighty-five thousand housing units to keep up with the expected demand. So that's a little bit of where we see, see things going in the future. So for Arlington specifically, what does this mean? Well, I think we all talk, I know the Board has talked, I talk, citizens often talk about the importance of Arlington's economic diversity. And one of the most cherished things about Arlington is that people from all walks of life live here. And to a great degree, that is, that's true. If you look, we have twenty-seven percent of our households are classified as having low income. Inclusive in that, eleven percent of our households in Arlington have extremely low incomes. So we, we do have economic diversity in Arlington. But maintaining that economic diversity is gonna be a challenge in light of rising housing prices. So to go to the next slide, you can see, making this more Arlington-specific, just about thirty percent or fifty-six hundred households in Arlington are cost burdened, so they spend more than thirty percent of their income on housing. That a higher proportion of that is represented by seniors. Actually, thirty-seven percent of all low-income seniors spend more than fifty percent of their income on housing. So seniors are disproportionately impacted by the housing crisis. Moving over to the right side of the slide, again, I think we can all see this in our day-to-day life. Housing prices in Arlington between two thousand and two thousand fourteen have, went up seventy-one percent. Income only went up forty-five percent. So the possibility of affording a home has gotten more and more complicated or more and more challenging over the past, over the past fourteen years, or at least fourteen years between two thousand and two thousand and fourteen. And then in the bottom right-hand corner, this is what Ms. Mahon was getting at under the prior Agenda Item. From two thousand to two thousand and fourteen, there were one thousand four hundred and sixty rental units that were converted to condos. Since two thousand and fourteen, we recently pulled some new data, approximately another six hundred have been converted to condos. So that, I will admit, that is good for the town's tax base, but that is gentrification in action. When you see condos converting, it's not, not saying it's a bad thing, but it means we're likely losing a unit that was affordable to some, and it's moved to a higher-priced unit. So there's no, I don't, I don't come here tonight with a recommendation for what to do about that, but simply a statement that if you wanna, if you wanna see gentrification, it's happening in Arlington at a, at a, actually an increasing rate. Go to the next slide. So what can we do about it? Well, I think the Board and the Town are already doing some very good things in terms of our commitments to affordable housing. The Select Board, as it's aware, has supported the Housing Corporation of Arlington's efforts at both Downing Square and Broadway. They actually have combined between those two projects fifty-seven units in the construction pipeline, and those will all be affordable units. And the Board, again, has been a critical piece of supporting CPA funding, CDBG funding, supporting a portion of a prior project at Westminster as a friendly forty B. So the Board has taken great efforts to make affordable housing possible in Arlington. More broadly, the Board has also done good work supporting CDBG for other affordable housing projects, both at the Arlington Housing Authority as well as the Housing Corporation of Arlington. Again, CPA funding, dedicating home funding to both produce affordable units and preserve through upgrades to both HGA properties and the Housing Authority. The Town has maintained the weatherization program, and that is a, that's a really critical program to helping people upgrade their homes to be able to afford to stay in their homes in Arlington, which is a key piece of, again, preserving that economic diversity in the community. The Planning and Community Development Department does great work monitoring the existing subsidized housing inventory. That's another key part. A lot of people think about affordable housing production as producing the unit, and then you're done with it. Well, you have to monitor that unit, make sure it maintains its affordability, make sure that people who are living there qualify for it, so that you're actually getting the benefit of producing affordable. And then finally, there's been a lot of great work supported by this Board, as well as the Redevelopment Board, in continuing the implementation of the master plan as well as the housing production plan. So I think we have a good base here in Arlington. Beyond that, as the Board may recall, Arlington joined the Metro Mayor's Coalition back in January of two thousand eighteen, after a discussion with the Board between myself and the Board, primarily because of the Metro Mayor's Coalition's efforts on both their Climate Task Force and their Housing Task Force, issues that are directly interrelated and both of importance to Arlington. And those are really the driving factors for joining the Metro Mayor's Coalition. Excuse me. And I think it's important to point out, Metro Mayor's Coalition, one point four million residents in the Greater Boston region, fifteen communities, five of which have a manager form of government. So even though it's called the Metro Mayor's Coalition, a third of it have either a city manager or a town manager. The Chair asked me if they would ever consider changing their name to just the Metro Coalition so it could get mayors out of the title.
I'm just, my favorite.
I might bring that up. We'll see.
Hey, we're a third block, so come on.
And there's certainly communities in there that we would not compare ourselves to, such as Boston or even Cambridge to some degree. But there are communities that are part of the Metro Mayor's Coalition that are very similar to us, like, like Melrose in particular, that's actually very, very similar to us. And Brookline as well, actually, and Braintree. So part of the efforts of the Metro Mayor's Coalition, again, is this Regional Housing Task Force. And it was that group that came out last year with this regional goal of producing a hundred and eighty-five thousand housing units. Boston has a goal. All of the other communities are now working towards formulating their goals. And that's really, could be part of this conversation that we have. Jenny, do you remember what Boston's goal is?
Sixty-three thousand.
Sixty-three thousand. So a pretty significant portion of the one eighty-five. And actually, again, member communities, we're all, we're all working towards discussing, you know, what, what our goals will be. Some communities might not set a goal because of political complications with setting an actual number, and that might be our case, but talking about what our housing production goal might be, either in terms of concept or number, is something we, we'd recommend that we think about. So what, what can we do here? Well, we had a lot of talk at Town Meeting last year, and I think there's some things we'd like to talk about again, and there's some things we want to talk about in a different way. One of them is considering amendments to the Inclusionary Zoning Bylaw. Basically, what that means is talking about what is the best, smartest way that we can generate affordable housing if we're allowing for more, allowing for more housing development in general. So if we're allowing, allowing for more mixed-use development, how can we amend the Inclusionary Zoning Bylaw to actually produce affordable housing? So that, that's one thing we want to look at. We do want to talk about housing creation along the Commercial Corridor. And I think we want to talk more about the realities of the climate benefit of building along the Commercial Corridor so that we can have people close to transit and closer to where they work, take people off the roadways. And we want to talk about the Commercial Corridor in general, zoning along the whole corridor. There's a lot of business districts, but there's also some R districts along the Commercial Corridor. We want to talk about that comprehensively. We might want to consider looking We might want to consider looking at accessory dwelling units again, but considering them with an age or family restriction, so that they might be more palatable to be allowed or welcomed to neighborhoods. And then finally, there could be other tools that we want to look at that are outside of zoning but can have an impact on housing. Things that might fall more directly at the board's purview are issues surrounding displacement or things that we can do around condo conversions if we wanted to talk about preservation of certain affordable housing units. So back to where I started, what are the next steps? Well, there's been a lot of public engagement to date, and we want to continue with that public engagement, talking not just with the select board and the redevelopment board, but also with people in the community. After this meeting tonight, not actually literally after this meeting, but at a future meeting of the ARB, myself and Jenny will go and we'll have a similar conversation with the ARB, to really try to set the stage for this conversation. After that, like I mentioned, we'd love it if the select board of the ARB would hold a joint meeting in early fall, maybe in September, to to have all ten of you around a table talking about this. And then we'd like that to lead to the ARB making a recommending strategies to pursue by late fall or early winter, making a decision about whether or not they think they'll be ready for either a spring town meeting or maybe a special town meeting in the fall of 2020. And I think a big question for the board to think about is not just around the details of this, but what role is the board comfortable playing? I know the board likely doesn't want to step on the toes of the ARB. The ARB very much doesn't want the input of the board on this, but I'm interested in hearing your feedback on this overall, and also what role you think you're most comfortable playing.
Mr. Dunn.
First, I'd like to move our seat.
Moved by Mr. Dunn, seconded by Mr. Carroll. Mr. Dunn?
Thank you, Adam, for and Jenny and everyone who worked on that on the presentation. So I am absolutely convinced that there is a problem with housing in town. I think that we're we are, I mean, we've never had enough truly affordable housing, and I think that the current market forces are really changing our town in ways that we aren't comfortable with and don't want to happen. Like, I mean, like, I think that the first thing to say is, we have a problem. And I think that, and I also want to say that doing nothing is really isn't a solution. I know that there are definitely, there's concerns, like, I like Arlington the way it is, and I don't want to change it. And my message for people with that sentiment is, I understand that, and I'm with you, but this is simply not an option. If we do, if we do nothing, the we will continue to change, and we have to change our ground rules if we're going to make an impact on this problem. I think the third point is that you really illustrated well, I think, is that this is a regional problem. It's not something that we can just solve. And like, there is a way that we could do this, we could say, you know, let's just wait for Boston to solve it, and we're not going to worry about it. I don't think that's healthy. I don't think it's right. I think that we should do our part to help solve this regional problem. And I do think that regional coordination makes sense in that. So I definitely accept, so I think that there's all the, I mean, I would, I have no idea what particular vehicle in a perfect world would want to do this, would we want the legislature to do this, would we want, but we've got the Metro Mayor's Coalition, and they're headed in the right direction, so let's work with them. And so on the ARB, I'm very happy to work with them. I definitely think that we have been, we've always had a really conservative and position about where the purview of other boards are, because it can lead to unhealthy ranker, I think, in a lot of ways. So like, you know, we don't tell the finance committee, you know, what we think that the recommended budget should be, and, you know, we don't tell, you know, the conservation commission what we think that the, you know, this particular thing should be. But I am always happy to work with another body that wants to work with us, and so, you know, if the ARB is is actually inviting this collaboration on something that would generally be considered their purview, I think it would be, I'm more than happy to help. And I think that it's recognizing how important the problem is and and tackling it with the with the right with the right group of people. And I also think that frankly, this board is a little bit more, it has some strengths that the ARB can use. I think we've, you know, as electeds, as opposed to being appointed, we've got a little bit more political, I don't know, instinct, I guess, about how to persuade town meeting, like, you know, not just that, how to come to a consensus and how to persuade town meeting that 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 we've that we've adopted the right direction. So I appreciate the presentation, I think it was well put, and I think it has some really key points, and I'm very happy to support it in the months and couple of years going forward.
Thank you.
Mr. Hurd and then Mr. Carroll.
Just briefly, to follow up on what Dan said, a lot of people talk about housing and affordability in Arlington, and what can we do about it? And I tell them, this is one of two things to do. One, you make Arlington less desirable to live in, which, it's true, we laugh about it, but it's true, or you create more units. And I think this presentation does a real excellent job of showing people the numbers and showing people why that is an issue, and it shows the demand and then the lack of increased housing stock that meets the demand. It's simple college economics that you, it's going to drive the prices up. So I I also am happy to have our board involved in discussions with the ARB. We can always defer to them for the technical aspects of the zoning bylaws that they have a little more expertise in, but I think the main thing about involving us is it becomes more public. People tend to pay attention, not that people don't watch the redevelopment board meetings, but I think it's pretty, it's a pretty standard thing to say that more people are going to be watching these meetings, and they're going to be watching meetings that are joint meetings between the select board, and they're going to be watching the presentations made to us about these housing issues. Because I think in the town meeting, one of the issues that came up is not so much of a problem with the suggestions, it's just a lot of people didn't really understand what was being put before them. And, you know, even though there were a number of public forums, it just, it wasn't enough to convince the public that there was a need. The more we can be involved and help address that and get the word out to the to town meeting and to the voters who elect town meeting members, it certainly will help in the process, and we can have an open discussion about, A, how to increase the housing stock, but how to do it in a way that, you know, lessens the impact and does it in areas that can absorb that type of increased housing stock.
Mr. Carroll?
Thank you. Mr. Hurd and I took our ECON 101 classes at the same place, so, I mean, we're on the same page as far as understanding the supply and demand problem that we have here. And this is very real to me, actually, today. I mean, my nephew just graduated from college in the spring, started a new job in Boston today, and he's sleeping on my couch in my basement because he can't find affordable housing, and he's unlikely to find it in Arlington. He realizes that. I think he's pretty much given up on that that prospect.
God help whatever student loan he may have.
God help whatever student loan he may have. So it is a very real issue, and especially when we look at those jobs numbers compared to the need. Mr. Hurd mentioned the debate at Mr. Dunn, at town meeting last year, and it pained me. I mean, I know there were a lot of questions, we came in for a lot of criticism for being, by and large, silent, but I think most of us respected the separation of powers around around zoning, and unless we're invited into the conversation, we're we're not going to weigh into a heavily heavily technical discussion. That said, this board was, you know, fairly heavily involved in the master plan process, and I know that we were fairly vocal, particularly around the mixed-use piece, I think, in particular, around the commercial corridors, and we, Mr. Chaplaine enumerated some of the actions that we've taken around affordable housing creation. We have a clear and demonstrated interest in that, as well as in economic development, and I think that that is an area in particular where it makes a lot of sense for our board to be involved in that discussion in a very vocal way. So I really look forward to that invitation, hope it'll be forthcoming, so that we can try to work work collaboratively and and try to explain some of those aspects of any proposals that might might come forward, especially based on what we see before us every other week. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. First, I just a question for the town manager and for Jenny. Is the redevelopment board already, have they discussed having a joint meeting with us, or is this something that's going to come up when you present to them following this meeting?
So I know I've discussed it with the chair, but Jenny, you could address whether or not you've talked about it in open session.
They have definitely discussed it, and actually, as part of their annual goal setting that they did recently in June, they talked about having this meeting, so, and and working together in order to implement the changes.
Okay, that's great. And I feel the same way as my, as the other members, that the way the town bylaw works, if something is delegated to another board, we don't get involved, it's out of our purview. I shouldn't say we don't get involved, but, so the fact that they're willing to do that, and I think I think it's a good idea, given the discussion at town meeting and in the months leading up to town meeting a year ago, and clearly, we have an issue in town, and we have a regional issue, and I echo what Mr. Dunn said, because we're not going to solve the problem in Arlington, but we can do our part, and there are a number of things to discuss, and there are a number of, you know, ideas that came forward last year, and perhaps it was too all-inclusive in terms of what was to be changed, but there's some opportunities here going forward to to create housing, to to create affordable housing, and also just to create value in the community. And it's a it's a full discussion. You can create create affordable housing, you can create other types of housing, but you also can improve your commercial corridors and increase your tax base at the same time. And that goes hand in hand to, you know, helping to spread the burden. So I welcome the opportunity to have a joint meeting, but I am mindful that me personally, I'd like to hear some ideas from the redevelopment board before I let them know what I'm thinking.
Okay, and I'm just going to briefly echo that sentiment. My time is no more important than anybody else's, but as someone who's watched the redevelopment boards, FinCom and school committee, from the inception of them, they're being taped, nobody here wants to have a meeting to have a meeting to check off a box. I can tell you, speaking for myself personally, and a member of this board, but also a citizen activist, I have faithfully watched the redevelopment board, and I guess what I would say in a positive way, if there has been a one-eighty turn in terms of this such meeting, I'd be pleased by that, but I'm going to go with the, my thing is, if we're doing this meeting just to do it and and get it done, then we shouldn't be doing it. But I would would take it on the good faith effort of the town manager and the planning director, that this is, there's some reciprocity on both sides wanting to talk and wanting to listen. And then the other thing that I'll just say, if there is such a meeting that we could speak about that I really see as a huge factor around, as the town manager cited, and we had longer discussion about this at our previous meeting that we all had individually, the gentrification issue, and that's why I started to bring it up, because I'm trying to find a way to address that. To me, that's by and large, not just the issues around gentrification, but also when I look at house, and my husband and I own a two-family, so you could say I'm speaking against my own profit or something like that, but I don't know what way, if possible, the town of Arlington or through the Metro Mayor's Association or the redevelopment board, how we begin to tackle that issue. I do want to tackle it somehow if if it's something we can't require or regulate, but if it's something, an informational process that we can get forth. I know at town meeting, I was shocked to sugar to see, you know, Ms. Myrac and Mr. Boz there, but maybe that, those people who obviously have a seat at the table, maybe that's the venue for what I would like to get done. I think if people aren't told information, it's easier for them not to do the right thing. So if we can't make a requirement around condo conversions in two- and three-family homes, that we do have some sort of venue, whether it's through attorneys, and I'm not being sarcastic, whether it's through Bob Boz and Ms. Myrac and everybody else, that gets out some of the the biggest, because that's where we're losing a lot of affordable apartments that are rented. And I think if some of these people, they can still make good money, but there's a lot of issues that come out of that in terms of, at this board, we have to deal with people who buy a condo, and they don't know that this is how many parking spaces you have, you can't park overnight. Some people don't know, I mean, the police, I can't tell you how many times they've been out, that you have floor one and floor two, and, you know, floor one, you know, they say they're smoking something down there, and I don't agree with that, well, that's their right, and floor two says they play the music too loud. But one of the ways, I think, if people were more aware of it, is if they did a condo association agreement, which my neighbor across the street did with the two-family. Took them a little bit longer, it didn't get, you know, probably could have got another fifteen thousand. But again, I'll leave it to if there's anything we can start to do around gentrification of these condo conversions, even if it's just information. And I was only being a little bit sarcastic about, but I, when I saw them up in the rafters of town meeting. And then the other thing that I heard a lot of around accessory and, well, I guess, just accessory dwelling, and the manager touched on it, but if we can make it true perpetuity, I don't know how we do that, but if we can make it true perpetuity in terms of, a lot of people were saying, like, oh, that one of their relatives is suddenly going to get ill, I'm talking from people that I spoke to out there, and then two, three years later, they're going to sell the home, and that's going to get redistributed, and I didn't really see that in there. Or that message didn't get across, maybe, you know, it wasn't there, and people, a lot of people now know perpetuity to be up to twenty years, so. So again, I'll leave it to the town manager and the planning director about the viability of this meeting, you know, in the fall, and discuss what's the best way to have it run, if you want it hosted by the redevelopment board. No egos here, that's a fine with me, and, you know, where, when, and how, I'll leave it up to you all. But if you think it should be delayed, and it's not quite its time in the fall, I'd much, you know, I think you got the message on that. Okay, on a motion by Mr. Dunn to move receipt, seconded by Mr. Carroll. Any further comments or questions? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, you can have a vote. Thank you. We'll now do consent agenda, minutes of meeting, June 17, 2019, reappointments, terms to expire June 30, 2022. Board of Health, Kevin Fallon. Board of Youth Services, Kimberly Kayer. Cemetery Commission, Michelle Hassler. Commission for Arts and Culture, Annalise Ruggles. Conservation Commission, Nathaniel Stevens. Constables, Richard Boyle. Open Space Committee, Kelsey Cohen. Brian Calder, Anne Leroy. Reappointments, sorry, reappointments. Board of Commissioners of Trust Funds, Damon Barglow. Term to expire, 6/30/21. Augusta Haydock. Term to expire, 6/30/22. For approval, annual Arlington for all ages. Wait, am I going beyond the consent agenda?
No.
Nope, it goes all the way up to eight? All right, because I know someone's saying, okay, I'll just say, for approval, Arlington annual, annual Arlington for all ages. 5K race, September 8, 2019. For approval, Arlington Open Studios, banners, Pamela Shanley, Director. Request special one-day all-alcohol license, 8/17/19, Robbins, Wittermore for a private event. Request special one-day beer and wine license, 9/14/19, for Town Day Beer Garden. First, is there a motion to?
So moved.
Mr. Dunn, seconded by Mr.
Second.
Madam Chair, I must abstain from the meetings of the minutes of June 17, as I was not present.
Okay. I see, Suze, is anyone here? You want to come? Thank you. That's why I stopped, because I'm like, wait a minute, I know she said to talk about it, sorry.
I don't have to talk about it.
Name and position for the record.
It's Susan Karp. I'm the Director of the Council on Aging. Very nice to see all of you, hope you're enjoying your summer. Very briefly, we're on again. This is going to be the 10th year of where we do this community-wide race. Began with 25 runners, it's now over 350, ages six to 86. So it's an awesome event. It's an opportunity for us to all come together as a community. We're supporting the Council on Aging and programs, and this year, we're also donating a part of the proceeds to the capital fundraising campaign for the $8.1 million renovation of our building, which might be getting air conditioning soon. So we're we're dressed in beach-like attire. So I'm here tonight to gain your support and your approval.
And where do they go online to sign up?
They go on arlington5k.com, and it went live on Friday afternoon. So it's very exciting. We've kind of changed the format a little bit in terms of how to register. Well, it's always been registering online, but we we will still do the same day. So it's Sunday, September 8, which is the first Sunday after Labor Day, so mark your calendars, and I'll be reaching out to some for for some speaker opportunities.
Thank you. Okay, any further? First, I'll do the minutes of meeting, June 17, 2019, on a motion by Mr. Dunn, seconded by Mr. DeCourcy. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, any abstentions?
Stay.
401. And then if it could, again, by Mr. Dunn, seconded by Mr. DeCourcy, to move approval consent agenda. Any further questions or comments? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, you can have a vote. Opposed, unanimous vote.
Good to see you.
Thank you.
Now we go to appointments, Cyrus Dallin Art Museum, Board of Trustees, Susan Gilbert, term to expire, 12/31/22.
Hi, I'm Susan Gilbert, and I've lived in Arlington for more than 10 years. Our town is fortunate to have the Dallin Museum, a special collection of original art created by a celebrated American sculptor and painter, who is ahead of his time in respecting Native Americans and appreciating their culture and plight. Although most people may not recognize the name Cyrus Dallin, many do know of his work, the statue in front of the Museum of Fine Arts entitled Appeal to the Great Spirit of a Lakota Native atop a horse, as well as his statue of Paul Revere in Boston's North End. As a trustee, I will continue to promote this gem of a museum, seeking to attract new members locally and more patrons regionally. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Move approval?
By Mr. Dunn, seconded by Mr. Hurd. Any further comments, Mr. Dunn?
So how did you know what we were going to ask?
[laughing]
Thank you very much for volunteering.
Very welcome.
Thank you. On a motion by Mr. Dunn, seconded by Mr. Hurd, any further questions or comments? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, unanimous vote. You're doing double chair, you're doing chair and mic duty, and that's also a testament to the work and volunteerism you give to Arlington, so we do appreciate that.
[inaudible]
Not enough.
Never.
Thank you. That's just a general, that's not a specific. Agenda item 11, Park and Recreation Commission, Phil Lasker, term to expire, 6/30/22.
I don't have a prepared speech like that, I'm sorry. Phil Lasker, one Claremont Court, I've been an associate member for a little over a year now. I think I was born to be on Park and Rec. Former landscape architect, designed a lot of parks and playgrounds over the years. I'm a contractor now, been doing this for 14 years, we specialize in athletic facility construction, soccer coach, have two young kids, love giving back to the community.
Is there a motion?
Move approval?
Mr. Kuro, seconded by?
Second.
Mr. De Corsi, any comments? Mr. Dunn?
Thank you for volunteering.
Thank you.
Born to be on the committee is really a great answer. Sometimes people say, Dan, why did you run for selectman? And my answer is, it's genetic, and, but you've got a better answer.
Thank you.
And I'm thrilled to see your resume, curriculum vitae, whatever, in terms of your experience with athletic fields, one of the first reasons, motivations I had when I got involved was working with the sports guys back then on Arlington's fields, and I, one of the first things I did, which was the very smartest thing I ever did, is I brought in people, not only who coached sports, but who also had a background, you know, Arthur Alice, he was in charge of BEPS in college, their athletic facilities, and rinks and things like that, so when I read that, that really jumped out, not that any one qualification usurps another, but that certainly is going to benefit in terms of what you do, and a lot of people in Arlington, whether you're in the sports community or not, say, and not just fields, you know, we want to see a new mindset, which we've started to do, is not only build it, but maintain it. Build the right thing and maintain it the right way.
Exactly.
So you definitely have that with the other commissioners, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. On a, any further, on a motion by Mr. Kuro, seconded by Mr. De Corsi, any further questions or comments? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, unanimous vote. Good to see you.
Thank you.
This was a 7:15, I didn't, I just saw that now. Sorry. I can't believe, oh my gosh, Jackie, she's going to call me or text me for sure. National Grid petition, intersection of Forest Street and Bow Street Public Way, we have Barbara Kelleher here, my apologies.
Madam, actually, pardon, I'm sure I just noticed that Mr. De Corsi has stepped away, I think, because he's refusing himself, I believe, from this.
Thank you, thank you. Sorry.
Yeah.
Continue, okay.
My name is Barbara Kelleher, I'm the permit representative for National Grid, and the National Grid hereby respectfully request your consent to install and maintain a scatterbox and 110-foot conduit in Forest Street, Arlington, from the existing regulator vault in the intersection of Forest and Bow Street, southwesterly to pull 8 to 9 over 12, in order to provide electric service to a scatterbox, which is a supervisory control and data acquisition box.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Move approval, subject to all conditions as set forth.
Moved by Mr. Kuro, seconded by Mr. Hurd, and I apologize, Ms. Kelleher, normally, the 7:15 would be on the other side of the page emboldened, and it wasn't until, but I won't do that mistake again, my apologies, and if the reason that the vice chairman cited, which seems to be the case, if we could also note Mr. De Corsi exiting before Agenda Item 12 and returning after. Motion by Mr. Kuro, seconded by Mr. Hurd, Mr. Dunn?
Yes, so I see that the part of the proposal is that we'd be reconfiguring the sidewalk, and that's also being done?
Yes, I presume that's by the town, I'm sure that we're notified, and because the sidewalk is being done, everything that is, is being done is in the sidewalk, except for the conduit that's going across the street to the pole.
Okay, and it's going, and it's going across the street to the pole that's at the corner there?
That's correct, in order to provide electric service to that.
Yeah, so the only, my only thought about this, and I probably apologize to the town manager for not having brought this up earlier, because I hadn't seen the plan actually until I did my review, and I didn't review it until this morning, was that, my biggest complaint about that intersection, is that when you're on Bow Street, and you're trying to make left onto Forest, is seeing the traffic coming from the right is really hard. It's like, that's my big, so what you're, when you're pulling, when you're like, when you're on Bow Street, and you're making that left, you're kind of looking to the right, and you're praying as you press the accelerator, because you don't have a lot of view, and that pole is part of the problem, and I wonder if there's a part of a configuration possible there that would move that pole or otherwise improve the sightlines, but I'm happy to approve it and see if there's a revision there, but that, that, so the good news about this design is that it improves pedestrian safety, because it makes for a shorter walk across the street. Totally, you know, obviously, totally in favor of that, but my concern is, is that the, for the, for the traffic there, it's still not great.
Can I just, I think I know exactly what you're saying, so if I'm coming down Bow Street, going east, and then I want to take a left onto Forest, I'm sort of at an incline, looking down to the road?
Yeah.
And the older path, so that's exactly, I want to, for point of reference.
Yeah, so like Downing Square is behind you, and you're taking a left towards Arlington Cafe and Sono.
Right, and I know what you're talking about, because you have to inch out, inch out.
And you just have no visibility of what's coming down on the right, partly because Forest there goes down into that gully underneath the bike path, so.
Take a look.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sorry, I didn't mean to.
No problem at all.
Because I know what he's talking about, I understand.
I understand.
And thanks for being patient with me.
Nope.
Won't happen again, I promise. On a motion by Mr. Kuro, seconded by Mr. Hurd, any further comments or questions? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, unanimous vote. Have a great summer, say hi to Jackie from, she's fantastic. I'm not going to read the Citizens' Open Forum preamble, because we did that already, and nobody's here.
You want to wave at Steve?
Yeah, I think when he sees Ms. Kelleher, he's being a gentleman and opening the door. Okay, Mr. De Corsi has returned for, no one here for Citizens' Open Forum, we're going to go to Agenda Item 13, discussion, MWRA, this is one I think of Kevin, see the F, debt shift, Mr. Chap, the line.
Madam Chair, would the board entertain doing 14 first, I think it makes more sense to talk about 14, and then do 13, if that's okay?
And 9 and 14.
So tonight, we are asking, excuse me, let me open this up, asking the board to consider FY20 rate increase for the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund, we're asking for a 7.5% rate increase for the water, water rates, 7.5% increase for the sewer rates, and I don't believe I made mention of this in the memo, but also that same percentage increase on the administrative charges that are associated with the bill, so both the base admin fee, as well as the fire prevention fee that is associated, associated with people who have sprinkler systems. As the board may recall, there was a rate increase last year, 5.5% for water, 4.5% for sewer, there was no rate increase between FY14 and FY2018, so there was a break in time where there were no rate increases. We're now back into a trend where we're using less water than we had originally projected, and with MWRA assessments going up, as well as our own capital plan with certain increases, we're buying a Vactor truck this year, one of those big vacuum trucks that cleans out catch basins, to keep pace with expenses, we're asking for the 7.5% increase. One of the pieces of the math that's important to remind the public is, you might say, why 7.5%, that's all above inflation, basically a third of the budget, or now a quarter of the budget, is the MWRA debt shift, which is $5.5 billion, and that's static, that doesn't go up, so when you do a rate increase, you're only getting it on 75%, 75% of the budget, so you often need a higher rate increase than even just what your cost of expenses are going up. So happy to answer any questions the board might have, but we are, we're asking for that to go into effect for what would be the final two bills of FY20.
Mr. Dunn?
It's actually a comment more than a question, so in the previous conversation with Adam and Mike Rodemacher, one of the things that I thought was interesting, so we pay, the MWRA, you know, bills all the various towns and cities based on their usage, and so Arlington's usage of water keeps going down, so you'd think our share would keep going down, but what's interesting is that everybody else's water usage is also going down, so we keep holding steady, but what Mike said, which was new, was that in the current, the most recent year, our usage went down by more than everybody else's, and so it's going to be interesting in next year, is that we should see the benefit of that, because we'll actually have a lower share of MWRA's budget.
Correct.
But no love this year.
Is there a motion of any kind, or?
Move approval of the recommended 7.5% increase.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Kuro, Mr. Kuro?
Yeah, I just had one, one question I just want to put out there. I know we're about to talk about the debt shift and potentially rolling that off, and we had, wow.
Ooh, I'm not going to say.
The gods don't like that.
[laughing]
Potentially rolling that off, and I know we had discussed that in the run-up to the overriding debt exclusion campaigns, as one way that could potentially provide some relief to smaller households who presumably have lower water and sewer rates, a lot of which would be senior households. That's one way that I think we can provide some relief there, but as I'm looking at the sheet that you have in here from the MWRA Advisory Board, I did notice under the additional 2018 data by community down the bottom, there is a question there, does this community offer senior and/or low-income discounts? It says no. That's something we didn't discuss, we talked a lot about tax relief, but we did not discuss what legal mechanisms there are to provide direct relief in water and sewer for seniors or others with lower incomes, especially considering the discussion we had tonight about economic diversity. I'm wondering what types of mechanisms are there that are out there that this board might want to consider as we go forward?
So, if I may, Madam Chair, so we learned that of the 61 communities, MWRA, 20 offer some type of senior slash low-income discount, so about a third of MWRA communities offer some type of program, and a third of those 20 base it on the 41(c) tax exemption program that we do offer out of the assessor's office, and the rest offer different variations of either a flat amount that's off, or some percentage that they'll forgive, so it's a minority of the MWRA communities, but there is a means to do it. We did some quick numbers with Mike today, if we chose to do it similar to how we structured the Circuit Breaker Program in terms of eligibility, and every eligible person took us up on it, and we forgave, I think we said, you know, up to $200 a year in water sewer bills, it would probably equate to about a percentage increase that would be necessary on the rest of the system to support that. So it's possible, I think it's possible, we'd have to study a little bit more, come back with a recommendation, but it is something we can look at doing.
Is that something that this board can do autonomously, a measure we can take autonomously? Do we have to get town board approval for that?
I would imagine the board can do that, right, in terms of setting the water rate policy?
If the, yeah, if the town can set the, if the select board can set the water rate policy, I don't know that we'd need special legislation in the same way that we would need it for, say, tax rate.
Yeah.
But I'd want to follow up on that to make sure, but I think we, it's probably possible.
I mean, I think, given the juncture that we're at right now, I mean, we should go ahead with the recommendation as it's before us, but I would like to see that, that analysis when we come back around next year, be able to consider that, as we set the rates going forward.
Makes sense.
On Mr. De Corsi?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for the information in advance of the meeting, Adam, and just a comment, and this had come up earlier in the year town meeting, and then there was a Warren article that was withdrawn in terms of attempting to address water loss in town.
Yep.
And I think, given the increase that's being proposed here, and as we look forward, I hope there's a way maybe to examine where water loss is happening in the community, not house by house, but area by area, because there are three distinct areas where the town takes in water in the MWRA system, and so if there's a goal to try to get a handle on that, to try to, you know, perhaps there are certain areas that the water loss is greater, because that's a number with rates going up, that's a real savings, that if that loss factor goes down, it helps everybody, and I know Mr. Rodemacher's been working on different initiatives there, but I hope that can continue next year.
Absolutely, yes, it will.
Okay, on a motion by Mr. Dunn, seconded by Mr. Kuro, any further questions or comments? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, unanimous vote. Agenda item 13, Mr. Chap, the line?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So as was alluded to, the board has been talking about for several years now, I'm going to say it right, Madam Chair, reducing or eliminating the MWRA debt shift.
Saw the F.
As a means of reducing the impact on the tax rates, putting that cost back into the Water Sewer Enterprise Fund, and hopefully being more equitable in terms of folks who are using very little water, but paying that portion of their tax bill, having that reduced, and actually just paying a more trued-up amount for the amount of water or sewer that they're, they're actually using. So Mr. Rodemacher put together an analysis that's in your packet, taking a look at it, because of the point in the year we're in, making any reductions to the shift this year would only be covered by two bills, so the impact would be quite draconian. So Mr. Rodemacher put together an analysis that looked at rolling back the shift in various proportions in FY21. So you have the analysis in front of you, looking at rolling it back by 25%, by 50%, by 75%, and entirely eliminating it. It should be... I think we've seen it. I think it's, if it's not on the MWRA.
Is it under 14?
It might be under 14.
It's the one that looks like this, Arlington WS?
No, I think it's under 50.
Yeah, if you go under 14, and you open up FY20 proposed rate increase, MWRA shift analysis, sorry about that. Go to the second sheet.
It's one that's sideways.
Yeah, that every time I try to turn, and I have a heck of a time.
So, so for those at home, I can, I can read it aloud, so the average bill that the board, the vote, just took for the average homeowner is $747, reducing the rate, the shift by 25% would increase that to $821, cutting it in half would increase it to $884, cutting it by 75% would increase it to $946, and completely eliminating it would raise the average water bill to $1,009. Now, there is some comparative data that's also been provided as part of the packet.
Sorry, where were we looking?
So it's the top of the second page on that.
Okay, sorry.
Got it. I reoriented this when I sent it over to you, I don't know what happened.
It's kind of like years ago, when there'd be 12 of us in the back of a station wagon at a drive-in, trying to see the movie, and I was always the one in the very back, that I just could see something and it moved out of the way. That's what this keeps, but Joe fixed mine.
Feels like an Etch A Sketch.
Screen lock. I'll have my six-year-old come, I'll show you how to do it.
So, so those are the projected impacts with, again, ranging from a slight reduction to a total. to a total elimination of the debt shift. What I'd like to recommend that the board consider is that when we do this in FY '21, or if we do this in '21, that we match up the amount that is rolled off, or that is eliminated, with how much high school related debt is coming onto the tax rate. So the expenses, the $5.5 million of the taxation related to the override that was passed a month ago, will hit the tax rate this December. And then as we kick off the high school project, there will be some amount that we will have to raise on the tax rate in December of 2020 for FY '21. I'd recommend that soon, this fall, we put together a plan, recommend to the board, where we would recommend rolling back the debt shift in the same proportion over the course of some number of years, probably over the course of two to three years, where as new debt rolls on from the high school, we reduce debt shift. What we do is, we actually will end up keeping levels of taxation level, as opposed to there being a decrease that then becomes an increase when the high school debt rolls on. Now, high school debt will be more than this $5.5 million, so it's not going to completely eliminate the change. But this is $5.5 million, the estimated debt payment when the high school's fully borrowed is somewhere between $11 and $12 million a year. So it will basically mitigate it by half. So if the board agrees with this conceptually, we'd likely come back sometime in September or October with a more well-laid out plan, because we'll have a better idea of the borrowing schedule and recommend something that the board can consider adopting in terms of rates, as well as backing off the debt shift for '21.
So would you like receipt, endorse, not approve yet?
I mean, I think any comments of support for that concept would be helpful to know that we should come back.
And I do, oh, I'm sorry. Did you have your hand first? Mr. Kuro and then Mr. Hurd?
Yeah, I would just say, I completely support that concept. I think the whole, you know, part of the idea when we discussed this was trying to utilize this mechanism to avoid a lot of sudden sticker shock as the new costs come onto the tax rate. So I completely support that concept. I do hope that we can do it within that three-year timeframe, because I think, I feel like it's important that we complete the rollback of the debt shift within the four-year commitment period of the override. So even though, I understand that you're matching it to the high school debt, but we did have a four-year plan that we, we put out before the voters. So I think it's important that it fit within that three.
That's a good caveat. Thank you.
Mr. Hurd?
I'd like to say first off, that wasn't a shot at Mr. DeCoursey. I was just saying how technologically advanced my six-year-old was.
No offense taken.
No, I think this is a great idea. Of all the people that I've talked to, most people don't know about it. And the people that know about it are surprised that it happens. And so I think this is something that's been a long time coming. I like the idea of rolling it out over a couple of years, but also letting the full force of it come in when we start paying the main bulk of the debt exclusion bill. Question. So part of the draw of this is that, you know, it shifts to people's usage base, which encourages people to conserve.
Yes.
But the flip side of that, when we talked to Mr. Rodamacher about this, was that as people conserve too much, it then turns, turns into higher needs for rate increases because of fixed costs. Which I don't know if it's any kind of a discussion about that point, but I just wanted to lay that out there. But...
I mean, it's important, it definitely bears...
Overall, it's still better for conservation.
It's still more, it's still a more fair way to do it in terms of people paying for it. They actually use. But you raise a very good point that, like most utilities, so I mean, I think it really is basically the same with National Grid and ever source, same for us. So much of our expense is based on the fixed assets, maintaining the infrastructure and paying MWRA debt. So all the money that they put into the water system in Deer Island, that's the bulk of what we pay in our MWRA assessment. So that's fixed. No matter how much water we use, I mean, it, how much water we use dictates exactly what percentage we pay of that, but a lot of it is fixed. We have costs that we have to pay regardless of how much water is used. So your point is right on that it, you know, it gets a little bit of cognitive dissonance that even though you're using less, we might have to increase rates more. That is, we'll have to continue to monitor that as we, hypothetically, let's say the board moves to, you know, cut the shift in half in the first year, and that raises the average bill by $140. That could create some drastic conservation. And then we'll have to monitor that and see what type of adjustments are necessary.
Mr. Dunn?
Um...
DeCoursey, sorry. Raise all the hands.
So the, I think your point is well taken, which is actually goes back to my first comment about where this year, it looks like we're using less than everybody else. So if we can use less and use less than the other towns, we're in a race, then we, then we don't suffer. But you're absolutely, but you're absolutely right about the risks and outcomes there. So first off, full speed ahead, totally agree. Second thought is, I think the plan should also look at any of the other elementary schools that are coming off the debt, the tax rolls for the exact same reason. And for the third, and partly because of that and just because of the planning, I personally would be fine if you came back actually November. Like you said, September, October. But, you know, as the high school, you may, you may find yourself in September with a lot of unknowns about the high school debt. And we certainly need to resolve it before we set the tax rate in December.
Yeah.
But I don't feel any urgent, like, whether we talk, whether our next conversation is September, October, November, it's all the same to me.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, I think it's, it's absolutely critical that we do this over the next few years. And I understand why we're not doing it next year because of the override. But because of the change in the federal tax laws, that's, to me, is a huge reason to bring this back to rates. One, and two, there are ratepayers that don't pay property taxes. So that, not a lot of them, but there's some, so as a matter of fairness, and people can control consumption. So it's, it's not something that's tied to the value of somebody's home now. It comes back and it's on the water bill. And I understand why you don't want to do it for this year. But I think if there's a way to do it in that time period, I'm with everybody else on the board, let's, let's go ahead and do it.
And just very briefly, because I think we'll probably discuss it when we have our goals meeting, not the agenda item tonight. But when this came up, when I was speaking with the town manager, Mr. Chapdeline, I said, you know, a lot of people out there are going to say, gee, you know, you just got a debt exclusion override, water rates going up, reassessment three years ago. But then when Mr. Chapdeline so succinctly described that there is some, there's some variables you can't control, but there is currently some forethought in terms of trying to balance out with the high school coming online and when we might do this, as well as other. So where we can have forethought, we are doing that. So what I said to Adam is maybe when we have our goals meeting, if in a year, two year, three year, in whatever forum it's available, ideally if I had my druthers, whatever year that was appropriate, something would go home with your tax bills that would just be a separate little, you know, include a pie chart or something, and say, you know, this went up this much, but this came offline, and this is why we decided to do this thing in the, in the water sewer debt shift. I doubt that can happen. So the other thing is, and I said, if it's doable and not too cumbersome in terms of cost and people power, maybe something year one, two, three, we can go on the websites that, you know, you can plug in your tax bill, your, you know, address, and you can see that, you know, versus having it mailed out to you. Or maybe we, when we discuss it at the goals meeting, there's a completely different, better way to get that done. But how do we, the best way to get the word out that when people say, geez, every time I turn around, don't you people think, don't you know? And, you know, and when you say, well, we have to do these kind of reassessments in three and 10, I'd like to get out in whatever proper forum so that people know. We really are trying on the parts that we can manage. But that's for us to discuss on a Thursday goal meeting. But is there a motion to endorse? We did the water sewer debt shift. I mean, water sewer rate increase. I didn't do anything on this. I asked Adam, do you need to receive or endorse? And he said, any kind of support.
Move receipt.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Dunn, seconded by Mr. Kuro. Any further questions or comments? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This will be very quick. Am I correct? What did, what did we decide, Mrs. Kropalka? Was it August?
It's, we were waiting for Joe to decide.
Oh.
Goal-setting, Joe. What date was good for you? Would it be August 1st? I think it's on the first, Thursday night or the 15th. Someone, Dan, you can't do the 8th?
I cannot do the 15th.
Can you?
I can do the 1st.
Right, the 8th I cannot do, unfortunately.
So is the 1st good for, I mean, it's up to you. Is it good for, Adam, how about you? You're going to be there.
I can do that. I can do the 8th. Not 1st.
Oh, 1st.
Just 1st, excuse me. Yes.
Diane, is that good? Oh, yeah.
I'll make it work.
Are you sure?
We've got to get this thing done, yeah.
And I thank the board.
Vacation week.
Is it your, is it?
But that's okay. Do we want to meet at 6:00 or 6:30?
To meet at 5:30 if you want.
No, I don't want him, no, no, no. 6...
I mean, if you're on vacation, do you want to push to the 22nd?
No, no, I want to get this, I invariably, probably Cindy will want to come home early. So if she doesn't, I'll surprise her. Don't worry about it. 6:00 or 6:30?
We said 6:00.
6:00 to get out by, no later than 8:00 hopefully. And I just want to say that if anyone has any agenda items, you know, get them, suggestions, not the deletion stuff to Marie and Adam. I know that, I believe Mr. Dunn spoke at a meeting of something you might say we want to discuss, maybe not. I thought it was the same night Mothers Out Front came in. They asked us to discuss the Green New Deal. And then I thought I had a memory of you saying there was something. But anyways, you remember what you remember. I can't remember four. You're sorry. I apologize. And, and I just, whatever we can do that, for some reason, whenever we start the goal-setting meeting, we spend like 47 minutes on the first one. And then, so I'm going to do my best to endeavor that we, you know. And then once we get rolling, we seem to get there. So I'm trying to get that down to 28 minutes. So, okay, we will be meeting August 1st, 6:00 PM, over your side, Mr. Chapdeline?
Yeah, that's okay.
Going to have AC?
Yeah.
Nice AC.
Coldest floor on the town at all over there.
Okay. So that's all set. And now we need to, item 16, pull up your September and October calendars. We need to set meetings for that. That'd be nice if I did that. Sorry, one second.
September 9th looks like a winner.
Winner, winner, chicken dinner.
Because that's the first Monday after Labor Day.
September 9th. And when is Town Day?
The 13th, 14th.
14.
Do you know what primary day is? Oh, no, wrong year. Never mind.
Wrong year.
9th and 23, or 9th? Does anyone have a problem with 23? Or conflict?
One moment.
I might not be able to be here on 23, and I'll explain why under new business. But feel free to meet without me.
Well, let's check the 9th and the 30th. Is that too much time, Mrs. Kropalka?
The 30th?
And the 9th?
No, that's fine.
Okay, let me wait.
Let's have a agree.
So I can do 23. I can't do the 30th.
Okay, can everyone?
I can do any of them.
All right, 9th and 23? I don't mean to, sorry.
No, no, please.
And now, okay, October. What is this? Is this the second Monday in October, something?
It's the second, second Tuesday is Yon Khor. So you could do Monday, you could do the 7th if you wanted to.
7, if, we can look at 7 and 21?
I can't, I can't.
When does Yon Khor end?
It's stats.
Isn't it Yon Khor?
Mine says Wednesday, October 9th.
Okay, so it does end then. Okay.
So we could do the 7th and 21st if you wanted to.
I can't do the 21st if the 28th isn't too far.
How about, can everyone look at 7 and 28?
Good for me.
Not so good, is it?
I think both might.
Anyone have conflict? If not, I'll do...
Hold on. 28. Looks good.
Okay, so 7 and 28 in November.
Oh, in November.
I mean, in October. Sorry, I'm thinking of my birthday. And sorry, 7 and 28 in October. With that, I will say those are good dates. Correspondents received. Is there a motion to receive by?
Move receipt.
Mr. Hurd, seconded by?
Second.
Mr. Dunn. Any comments, Mr. Chapdeline?
Just to let the board know, Mr. White had also reached out to me, as well as the planning director, and I sent a letter to the town manager in Lexington requesting that they pay attention to there both being public access made available with any development to the Great Meadows, as well as a few parking spots set aside. And I received a very favorable response from the town of Lexington that they had already been asking about maintaining that and will continue to make sure that they push for that in whatever development goes forward.
Thank you. On a motion by Mr. Hurd, seconded by Mr. Dunn. Any further questions or comments? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No. Were you all set?
Yeah, no, I said, yeah, no, I said.
Okay. New business, Mrs. Kropalka. And then, Attorney Hine?
I just want to briefly thank Representative Garbely, Derek from his office, and the committee counsel who are working with my office very hard to get our special legislation for senior means tested tax relief into a form that the committee can, can work with. Thank you.
Mr. Chapdeline?
So my piece of new business, I didn't mean to be secretive under the Capitol's executive order. I think all members of the board received an invitation from Sue Scheffler today about the sister city trip to Japan. If you didn't, let me go and I'll forward it to you. If any of you are able to go, that would be great. But as of right now, I am planning on representing Arlington to go to Nagakyo, which I'd be leaving on the 23rd of September, which is why I wouldn't be able to be there. So right now, myself and Kathy Bodie are both planning on going. So I'm both excited and nervous at the same time. But the, it was, it was really great hosting the mayoral delegation when they were here earlier this year. So I feel like, you know, going back and showing to them that we treasure the relationship as much as they do, I think would be very important.
So if any of my colleagues can and want to go, Mr. Chapdeline, I'll let you all coordinate that out.
That's all I have.
Is it a DeCoursey?
Yeah, two, two items. Madam Chair, thank you. First of all, we've been talking about water tonight, and I want to commend the DPW. We had a water main break in our neighborhood yesterday of all days, but the hot weather down on Bay State Road. And they came out and were there the good part of the day. So thank you for that. The second thing I want to just mention briefly is just recognize a long-term town meeting member and a former employee of the, of the town, Bill Barrett. For the past 42 years, he was a golf coach at Arlington High School. And last week, he, he was, he retired as, as the coach. He was a phys ed teacher, Mrs. Mahan. And I remember him at the high school.
Amy McQuaid, yeah.
Also a town meeting member and as part of the community service for the golf team. Every year, the golf team would help set up for Town Day. And they would always have a picture in the chamber here. So everybody calls him.
Another DeCoursey in the chair seat, as I recall.
Yeah, there was in your seat. Yeah. And well, and when I got elected, he sent me a text. He said, your son beat you to the chair, but congratulations. So tonight, I want to thank Dr. Barrett, because everybody refers to him as the doctor, for 42 years of great service as a golf coach. And I wish him all the best in his retirement. And he was one of those people who just gave great service to the town as a teacher, town meeting member, and as a coach. And he touched a lot of lives. So thank you, Doctor.
And I'm going to work on him for Town Day.
Yeah.
I think you will. The boys will definitely come to Town Golf Club. Mr. Dunn?
Nothing.
Just one thing. About a week and a half ago, we welcomed the Secretary of Housing and Economic Development to Arlington. He came for an event at Abbott's Frozen Custard. It was quite hot that day, so we were trying to dive for shade. But, you know, it was great for him to come. He lives in Lexington, so right down the street. But, you know, we enjoyed his visit. And he had a lot of great things to say about the work the administration's drawn for the, to help develop the communities. So.
Mr. Kuro?
No, I have no new business other than I understand that he's actually coming again tomorrow.
Yep.
So apparently likes Arlington for, to take a look at one of the HCA developments. There are two of them, I think.
Yeah, Down Square, actually.
Yeah.
And I did most of my new business earlier today, but then a third thing came up. Contacted by an Arlington resident who said, on the westerly side of Buzzel Field by the parking lot. Sent me a picture. It's kind of like a hilly area. I want to say it's behind a Damien construction house and comes up to Buzzel Field bike path. There are wooden planks that kind of go in the incline that are in really bad disrepair. I don't know, they, they definitely look to be in disrepair. I don't know who owns them. I don't know if that's something we... don't know if that's something we, so if you could just look into that, and if it's not us, if it's appropriate for us just to send a note, or, I don't know, I don't know, we can't really tell a private firm what to do, but.
Yeah, we can figure it out.
Okay.